Morning. I call the Board Policy Committee meeting on August 18, 2023 to order. Mr. Zing, call the roll, please.
Mr. Deegan. Ms. Boddy.
Present.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. O'Connor.
Here.
Dr. Lawley.
Here.
Mr. Vogelmann.
Here.
Mr. Zink. Ms. Mann.
Here.
Moving to number two. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper.
I make a motion to amend the agenda and move policy consideration holds for defining sex to the specific restrooms and locker rooms before policies are discussed for review.
So we have a motion on the floor to, excuse me, to shift the policy considerations to the front of the line, basically. Do I have a second? Hearing none, the motion dies. So we're back to the original approval of the agenda.
I can make a motion to pull policy 2210, 2220, 2240, 22, excuse me, 2510. There, I need to review that with the curriculum team that was brought to my attention, and I haven't done that yet, so I appreciate that. So I like to pull those.
I second the motion.
There is a motion to pull or put on.
Pull, pull. So I can, so I can have it on an opportunity to review.
2210, 2220, 2510.
And 2240.
Those four.
Those four.
There's a second?
Yeah, I second the motion to pull those policies.
Okay, discussion. Call the roll.
I'm sorry. I appreciate you pulling those.
Yeah, I need, I need to have a conversation with curriculum team, and you missed that, so I apologize.
Any further? Call the roll.
Dr. Lawley.
Yes.
Ms. Boddy.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Manning.
Yes.
Mr. Vogelmann.
Yes.
Mr. Zink.
Yes.
All right, we're back to approval of the original agenda. And I have a first and a second. Any further discussion?
I would like to move, I mean, I know my motion was denied, but we never got the opportunity to discuss it, and I would like to just state that last time, the policy meeting ran long, and because we have such an hour time crunch, I think this is the most important policy that needs to be addressed, and I would have liked to have moved that forward so we could not push that to the other side and skip over it again.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll for number three. I'm sorry, for number two.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Boddy.
Now.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Lawley.
Yes.
Ms. Manning.
Yes.
Mr. Vogelmann.
Yes.
Mr. Zink, yes.
Moving to number three. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 5, 2023?
So moved.
Thank you.
I second the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Boddy.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Lawley.
Yes.
Ms. Manning.
Yes.
Mr. Vogelmann.
Yes.
Mr. Zink, yes.
All right. Dr. Lawley, we'll move to number four, policy updates and topics.
Okay, I'd like to ask Mr. Vogelmann to work us through those.
Sure. You have the packet in front of you. And we'll just go down the list, and I'll kind of explain where they come from, and a couple of policies that were presented by some people here that can give you some detail as well. The first one we come up to is 0164, notice of meetings. This is the only update that came from Neola since the last board policy meeting. So they added line D in there, because as some school districts around the state were being sued by an organization because they were holding records commissions, but they were not noticing them. They were just doing them. And so it's just a reminder from Neola that if you do records commission, it has to be missed. So if you, there is a lot of times where you don't have records disposal, so you don't have a meeting. But if you have it, you have to use it as a special meeting notice. It's just a reminder for all Neola districts that when you have a records commission meeting, you have to notice it like a special meeting. So it's putting in policy that says, when we have a records commission, we'll follow those special meeting notices as required by law. That's all.
And it is our practice to notice those meetings.
Yeah, they just put it in there, and it's just for everybody, make sure they do it.
Okay.
All right.
Any questions, Board, on 164? Okay.
Next one, 1531. You'll see a couple of other policies that Adam captured to make sure that we're handling vacation days appropriately and it is communicated correctly. Instead of, like for this one, given 20. Well, you're not just given 20. You accrue them.
Right.
And so it can be interpreted that on September 5th pay, hey, where's my 20 vacation days?
Right.
Because it says I'll be giving them. Like, no, you're not giving them, you accrue them with time. So it's just the language clean-up, make sure everybody understands. It's an accrual process, paycheck by paycheck. It's not just a one-time dump, and you get them.
Yeah, that's how we currently do business. We do it as each pay, and that would also be very hard managerial if we then had to give everybody their 20 days based on when they actually started. I know a lot of people start at a certain, you know, natural start points for a school year, but a lot of the 260s, 260 employees, administrators sometimes can be different. So that would make it very tedious. So this is just the language cleanup that was recommended by legal.
So, and then I had shared some more language cleanup on this.
Grammar is amazing.
So the each administrator shall, and I don't think we need the word be. And then also accrue 20, and then after the number 20, it says such. I don't think we need such. And then in that next line, it says the rate of 1 and 2/3, and that's just, I think, a typo of the
It's like a zero.
Zero instead of a ho. So I just wanted to make sure we cleaned that up before we adopted those, please.
Yeah, sure.
And that, you'll see that same language in the elements, so we'll capture those too. We won't leave those and change those.
Anything else on 1531? Okay.
Next one, 2132. That's just adding in letter D, board approved, board adopted educational resources.
And was that a Neola update, or was that a?
No, no, it was not a Neola update.
I don't believe that would be that would be Dr. Lawley. It would be in line with Ohio Vice Code.
But if it's, wouldn't, wouldn't Neola have put that in there if it needed to be there for, to be in line with Ohio or your Vice Code?
I would think, but I can't speak to why they may or may not have had that in there.
I think it's just making it more specific so that the board understands that it's their responsibility.
Agreed.
And I, and I think that it's important to recognize that if this is, if this is approved, then the board adopted materials are the board adopted materials are the ones that this applies to. And if it's not, if it's not something, you know, like if I, if I bring a something in right now that is not board approved, and it's not a controversial topic, we don't, I mean, until it's approved, we don't worry about it. For example, if we're piloting something that's not board approved yet. So it does not, it does not apply.
So this also, again, like we were talking before, this, this are things that the curriculum department and the
Correct.
superintendent have deemed approved. We're not looking through every piece of what people are.
I don't know how you would have time to do that, but, okay. I just wanted to double check that.
We volunteer.
No, I'm not. I'm trusting the people that we put in place to do the job.
So it's not a good thing. Could do any others and balances?
Yeah, it's not our job to go through the curriculum piece back.
And I, I'm sorry. I think if you, if you read it, in order to achieve the educational targets for soon, supportive educational established policies which will authorize and encourage efficient and effective use of board adopted educational materials. It's just clarifying that, that's.
Okay, thank you.
It's not saying that.
Yeah.
It's just clarifying.
Anything further on 2132?
Okay. Next four then on the agenda are pulled. So we will skip down to the next one you should come up to is 341901, privacy protections of group health plans. Some, some cleanup languages. Adam continues to work through this. So these are his recommendations on changing of some, an increasing language that came from attorney oversight. So if you want to.
Changing from official to officer. It's just more consistent with how we do business. And then we got some feedback from the team. The technology, the technology, safety and security is all housed within Anthem and within the companies that we do business with. And so having that as the chief technology officer was kind of made somebody a bit anxious when they don't really have any control over it.
Or access to it.
Since I'm plan administrator, then it just makes sense for that to be with me then. I have no problem with that. So we updated that, you'll see that in the third paragraph down.
Did someone bring that to your attention that said, I feel uncomfortable with this?
Well, it's because we don't even, we don't have access to even have any say in any of these. So that's why Mr. Wesley made a good point of.
Yeah.
You know, it looks like this is on me, but, and I go, well, since I'm the one that signs contracts, and I'm the plan administrator, then I'll make it with me, that'd be fine.
Have to be you.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, it's language we have to have, but it's not really what we control. We control our systems.
Right.
Any further discussion?
Okay. Then on to the next one, 3432, and then later we get to 4432. This was based off requests about updating some policy language about sick leave. If there are some extenuating circumstances, that those would come into consideration by review of a committee if someone was requesting sick leave.
Can you remind me, you would be on the committee?
I would be the executive director of HR, superintendent, the treasurer, assistant superintendents to review it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that spells that out, just so there's no wonder like that.
So that was an addition?
Mm-hmm. It was an addition to, from conversations that had been held about some situations.
Any further discussion on 3432? Okay.
Okay. Next, 4422 in your packet. Once again, we see the update on vacation language. Once again, not given, it's accrued. And then pulling some language that was also in the AG, just pulling it into policy as well. Adam wanted this in there, so we're just adding, it's, it's a cut paste from the AG, so.
So again.
A such.
Such.
Yeah, the same, same capture.
That's deemed to be legally inappropriate, there may be a reason for that.
This says, mine says 2 instead of 20.
Yeah, that needs to be fixed on this one. Yeah, it's got the 2.
Yeah, it has 2 on mine, too.
Yeah.
Right here in the bracket.
Yeah, I see the number.
Print C to the 2. That 0 that was in the 2 down below. Pretty good one.
Yeah, I have that circled.
And then a little bit of a background, down on those other ones, that's administrative guideline currently. This is what we're currently doing, following. And it has financial implications, so it made sense to push that into a board policy. So then our administrative guideline will look like that range that we approved, very similar to what the admin side looks like.
We don't normally, as I recall, put our ranges in policy. I thought it was normally an administrative guideline. Why did we make a determination to do that?
The, the one that I sent this morning, it, I didn't think it had that in there. The salary would then stay with the admin guideline. If you look at that email I sent this morning, the salary ranges would then look like the administrative.
So they should not be in here.
No, that, yeah, correct. So that would be the part that would stay with the administrative guideline.
I know, I saw it pop up.
So remove.
So on the second page, salary range comes up, that'll be an administrative guideline.
Sorry about that. I'm still trying to navigate how to do the board docs to help rob out when I have these things too, but I wasn't able to do that so quickly this morning.
It's three-parted communication.
So I sent, yeah, I sent him a Word document, so.
We got it. We'll just, so it'll stop after the cell phone's typing language.
Correct.
Salary ranges will disappear. It will not be in the policy, it'll stay in the AG.
And that's helpful, too. So then when we get to June, like we did this past year, and we approve those, then we can just update those quickly and not go through the two reads, but it still has the board approval on that.
Okay, further discussion?
We'll get it. Okay. 4423 is nothing new. It will be rescinded because we have all of this language captured in other places. And so this is just, we are the, we're the only district that has this policy. Neola does not provide a 4423. So we created this a while back, but this is just what we do.
Well, and this is also.
Is it captured in administrative guidelines?
It's in the bargaining agreement. So because this is in the bargaining agreement, it's basically we negotiate this year, so if that changed.
We have to change.
This would be another thing we wouldn't want to forget to do, so it's just, it's in the agreement. There's no reason to have it here.
Right.
So it's just going to be rescinded.
No questions? Okay.
Next one you come to is 4432, which was the same as the 3432. It's just this covers your professional staff versus your certified staff. So it's captured in both areas now on the sick leave of having a team to convene if there's an unusual circumstance for sick leave request. Just captures both your certified and classified now.
I can't tell, but is it, is it a period after situation, or?
It has an underline because it was added.
Okay, pardon. So it would look like.
Yeah, it'll just be a period.
Okay.
Hey, it's always good to catch those now.
Okay.
Okay. Next one we come up to is 6550, travel payment reimbursement. This came from Adam, just kind of, instead of trying to keep up to date with what changes may be at time, it just refers back to the IRS will determine the per diem. So, because as you know, the per diem depends on where you go sometimes, based on the rates. And so he's just saying that your per diem won't be based off a flat rate, depends on where you're going, because the IRS will tell us what that per diem should be. Because according to what they say, it's more expensive to travel to Cleveland than it is to Columbus. It's more expensive if you're in Columbus to travel to Cincinnati than to maybe Indianapolis, so.
Do we capture this in administrative?
Yes, we do.
And I think it's updated every year.
We've made an update with that as well.
Yep.
Does it get updated annually, though?
It would be updated based on when the IRS guidelines would change. That's what's allowing for that. But there is going to be communication going out that's going to clarify how the per diem works for the PDs. There's some implications on, if, if we do things a little different, we have the ability to if we wanted. But if we do things a little different than those IRS guidelines, then we have to add wages on to employees' W-2s at the end of the year versus it's captured within the IRS per diem. So this is helping to clean some of that up, just to make sure that everything's compliant.
What changes and just changes.
Yeah, when it changes, we don't have to change.
We don't have to change the policies.
Because we say we'll follow whatever they say, and if they change, they change.
I agree with that. I just want to be sure that employees have an opportunity to go and find it when they need to, and they know where to find that information.
It's the exact same location where we had before, but
Okay.
the, the communication that I'll be sending out will be something just in regards to the PD forms, and that way everybody's on the same page, knows what's going on. We had a lot of questions on this. I know initially when this first went on as well, so.
Okay. Questions? Okay, I do want to note, before we move on to the next piece, we had discussed an agenda, and it didn't get put on this policy meeting. Changing, there's a policy around, I'm sorry, I don't have the number written, but tip on my fingertips. The number of committee members on board committees needed an update. And so that's something to.
You look it up real quick.
What I need to do is.
What is that, 0140?
That sounds right. Yes.
I'm sad I know someplace, but.
Cheerfully, you're calm.
Yeah, because currently it's two, two or five, it's not anywhere in between.
So you want to change what you, what are we changing it to?
What was the language we discussed?
Let me look through my box. Sorry about that. We talked about it, I wrote it down, and then I had to take off right after that meeting.
And I think we talked about it in a previous agenda meeting, too, so.
0140. Well, I was wrong with the number, so that makes me feel a little better. 0155.
Yeah, 55, there is committees.
You send the one.
Is 0155?
You send the email, the attachment. Sorry.
It's okay.
Well, it's not redlined, they did it similar to me. Wait here, sorry. I have a wrong.
Is it a board doc?
It's not, no, it's only, I'm all headfirst, it's very wrong.
Okay.
So what are we changing?
We have a bit of time. Are you okay if I hit print, you'll get it, grab our white copy?
That would be great, and then we can, we can.
We have to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Yeah, it would.
We'll make a motion for the agenda to include that. I'm looking for a motion to amend the agenda to consider 0155. And we can move forward and then come back around to this one at the end of our conversation.
Motion to, to amend the agenda to include 0, policy 0155.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
We'll have discussion soon.
Call the roll.
Ms. Boddy.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Manning.
Yes.
Dr. Lawley.
Yes.
Mr. Vogelmann.
Yes.
Mr. Zink, yes. Usually look at.
All right, we'll come back around to that one. Move to policy considerations, holds ongoing research, defining sex, gender, specific restrooms and locker rooms. Mr. Vogelmann?
Yes, so this came as a policy for consideration. If you guys decide that this is a policy you want to do, what we typically do with suggestions like you said, that don't have a policy, we would send it off to Neola, and they would assign a number based on where they think is fit. That's why there's no number with it, because once it's policy, they will assign the number based on if that's what you want to do. Similar to what, when, before, before they came out with an official policy about drones, we kind of had our own, and they assigned a number. And then when they created their own policy on drones, it took away our old policy and replaced the number. So if this is a policy that you would want to go forward with, that's why there's no number on it, because it's not official policy yet. But if you make that determination, we would send it off to Neola to get a number. So I would refer to Mrs. Boddy if she wanted to explain more, have any more discussion about it.
Well, I mean, I think it's all here in, in the writing. I think, I'm going to just go ahead and read, read it, I guess. Under the auspices of respecting the dignity of a minority of individuals, we are agreeing to trash the dignity of the mass majority. The lack of respect we show to biological girls by allowing biological boys to enter their most personal and private spaces must be reversed. These kinds of assaults on logic and common sense have become the norm in these times, unfortunately, and with institutions, when institutions are pushing political agendas rather than education. So I propose the following, August 18, 2023, Lakota policy defining sex and gender specific restrooms and locker rooms, and recognition of the innate biological differences between boys and girls, men and women, more specifically defined by their chromosomal differences. Male is an X5, female XX. The Lakota Board of Education enacts the following policy regarding the appropriate use of bathrooms and locker rooms effective immediately at all local Lakota district facilities. So that would include all policies, formal and informal, that allow biological boys access to girls' restrooms and locker rooms, and vice versa. Are as of the day that we decide to do this, hereby discontinued. And then as of the date we decide to pass this. Policy bathrooms and locker rooms will be separated and exclusive according to biological sex. So I just want to protect our daughters, and I think it's absolutely disturbing that we have to have this, this policy come forth. And the minority of students that are using the bathrooms would be able to use the bathrooms that have already been provided, which would be the, the parents' bathroom, the teacher bathroom, or the individual use bathrooms. And to protect the majority of our students, we have the availability to, to do that. And so I would like to, again, just pass this policy.
Discussion?
Many things in my head. How, how will you enforce this policy? How are you going to make people bring birth certificates to the bathroom? I don't know how you can determine if it.
Well, I think it's pretty obvious when a boy is a boy and a girl is a girl.
Let's do, not necessarily, not necessarily.
The other thing is.
You can't tell the difference between a boy and a girl?
Mrs. Boddy, let her finish her thought.
There's a lot of, okay.
Let's finish it off.
So no, you can't always, as a matter of fact, because there are girls that dress like boys, grow their hair out. You don't know the difference. Second of all, let me talk, please. Second of all, there was just a case in Butler County where a school district was sued for this very policy and lost. There isn't any way to enforce this. You, there are many cases where the transgender student, which is who you're referring to, doesn't want to be, it's their own personal decision. They don't want to go out there and say, oh, you know, I'm using, thank you, I'm using the single-use restroom. We have always done this on a case-by-case basis. We work with families, we work with the building administration. And quite frankly, I don't believe that we could get this passed legal.
Well, first of all, legal has cost us multiple amounts of money. And you, as a board, have done, have cost us multiple amounts of money because you listen to the attorneys who give bad advice.
In your opinion? That you have a horrible day to rid of.
Well, that's factual, actually.
Isn't it annoying if someone interrupts you?
Yeah, you can, you can see it in the expenditures. Also, the second part is, many schools already have separate boys' and girls' bathrooms, and it hasn't been an issue for many, many years. So why, what should it be an issue now trying to? That's just the liberal side of the argument trying to say, what are we going to do? Check their private parts?
Actually.
It's common sense, the law.
Actually, the policy is the.
It's common sense. Second of all, this has already been passed in another school. Anthony Wayne Local Schools has passed this policy. And multiple, and many, many, many schools have passed this policy. And they don't even need a policy because it's a given that boys use the boys' bathroom and girls use the girls' bathroom. It's common sense. And anyone that doesn't support this, it just blows my mind that you are allowing these boys.
What do you think's happening in there, for goodness sake? They're going to the bathroom, using the restroom, and they're leaving, and they're stalled.
But the, but the majority of the students are afraid to go to the bathroom, or they don't want to speak up, because they're going to be called transphobic or homophobic.
Once again, the majority is not what you think the majority is.
Actually, you're uninformed.
Actually not.
Actually, you are.
If we could keep our conversation on the topic and not personal, okay? Go ahead with what you're saying, but let's stop with the personal comment.
I'm done for now. I'm ready to hear someone else's lame excuse as to why we shouldn't have passed this policy.
Mrs. Boddy? She can't help herself. Mrs. Casper, do you have?
No, I just, I will never support this policy, so.
That's why you need to be replaced.
Well, I won't be replaced, so.
Again, personal comments, please. Mrs. Schaefer, there's a petition replacing.
I just tried to look up Anthony Williams Local School, and I was on. Anthony Wayne. Oh, Anthony Wayne, okay. I thought you said Anthony Williams, okay. So I wasn't able to find that.
Isn't this same exact word?
No, it's a little bit different.
And if you're interested, I could bring that forward.
That would have been a good thing to have, honestly, to be honest with you. That would have been a good thing to have, honestly, to be honest with you, when you brought forward this one.
Well, actually, I wa-, I like this policy better. So this is the policy I want to pass. But if you're willing to look at another policy that another school has passed, I can absolutely bring that forward. Because it's basically the same thing, that what I'm saying.
Okay, so here's, here's my issue. I happen to know a child that you would not be able to tell is a transgender student. You would not be able to tell. The per, the child could walk into the restroom. I promise you, I could show you a picture and have you pick them out of a lineup and you couldn't do it. Because the child transitioned in kindergarten. So you would not be able to tell. And that child is going to walk into the bathroom that they identify with and you aren't going to be able to tell. So they have now broken the policy and that's my point, that there's no way to enforce the policy because of cases like that. I, I think in, I think what you assume and I, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that it is very obvious when a transgender boy has transitioned to a girl or vice versa. And it isn't that obvious. And so I think we're going to set ourselves forth many, many lawsuits if we try to put something like this in place when you, when you can't tell.
Well, I'm willing, personally, I'm willing to take those lawsuits as a school district because there should be a clear separation. And I am so sorry for that child who has been physically and mentally abused by being allowed to transition as a kindergartner. That to me is child abuse.
Well, that's your opinion and you're, you're not a doctor.
That is many's opinions. That is child abuse.
You're not a doctor, you're not a lawyer.
And we should not be responsible for the abuse of a, of a parent who decides to transition their child and stick them in a, in a, in this type of environment.
And as it is now, they are in protected class, which again, a lawsuit. So because they are a protected class, and this is why we can't even remotely discuss this.
So are females.
Because legals, I, I mean, the legal opinion in this, you can't, there's many. Okay, I'm done. I'm just, I'm not ever going to be in favor of this. So I'm done. Somebody else have a chance.
I tried to pull some data so that we could have a conversation based on some actual, like left leaning data. It's from like OSBA. They're not valid court cases. So perhaps court cases and the Sixth Circuit is not valid to you, but I find them and their rulings to be valid. So the Sixth Circuit affirmed that a school district, you know, did not have, could, was not able to prevent a transgender student from using the bathroom of which they identified. And then there's another case that, that yes, the summary is off, off of the Ohio School Board Association's webpage, but it discusses a federal district judge recently issued a final ruling in favor of Jan-, transgender student Gavin Grime, Graham, I'm not sure you pronounce that name, that began in twenty fifteen with stops in the district court, Court of Appeals in U.S. Supreme Court along the way. And it says that according to the U.S. District Judge, discrimination on the basis of transgender status may be brought under a gender stereotyping theory covered by Title Nine. She found that Gavin's rights under both Title Nine and the Equal Protection Clause of the U.S. Constitution were violated by the district's policy that denied him access to the facilities that corresponded with his gender identity. So given that the courts that Lakota falls under have affirmed that we cannot block students from the bathroom of which they identify, I have some concerns. And then secondarily, this policy talks about, again, defining male XY, female XX. But if you look at data, one in six hundred people are going to be XXY. So if you apply that to our numbers, that would be approximately twenty nine students. There's also people who are XXY or triple XY and that's one in a thousand. And then we have Y only. And so when I looked at that and applied it to our numbers, that gives us approximately seventy students who would fall out of this policy that wouldn't even fit into any of the categories.
Then they could use the extra bathroom, these little things.
And right now, all of our students have access to those individual bathrooms. So I appreciate that some of our students may be uncomfortable if they are worried that there might be a transgender student, which is certainly their right. And so that's why we're giving all students access, any single sex bathroom, any individual stall bathroom. And I think that that is a good accommodation to make sure that we have a process that allows any student to have a situation of which they can be comfortable using the restroom. So it concerns me that we would knowingly violate what our current courts that we fall under are affirming and how they're. At this point in time. First of all, you can't trust the courts this day and age and it is obvious to many that they are corrupt. And number two, it is asinine to me that you are not willing to protect our females and that this is up for discussion, that you guys are choosing not to protect our daughters.
Why can't, if the female's uncomfortable, why can't they use the sex?
Why should a female have to not, have to leave the female bathroom to go, to feel comfortable? The bathroom is for a female. If you can, if you can carry a baby in your womb, you are a female. Plain and simple.
That would take out women that suffer from infertility and so.
But that's, they still have, they still, but they still have the equipment to carry a baby. They may have other issues, obviously.
Exactly.
Now that I would say that's another issue.
But if you have the equipment, if you're born with the equipment to carry a baby in your womb, whether it works or not, you're a female.
Actually.
And it's asinine that you can't even just, that you cannot tell the difference between a male and a female.
Once again, the name call is ridiculous.
I mean, this is crazy to me. I said this is asinine. I didn't call you the name.
As you point to either side.
Well, I'm sorry, but this is absolutely ridiculous.
So again, we're far more affected than our discussions when they don't become personal. Mrs. Schaefer?
I can say it's ridiculous. That is not anything personal.
Mrs. Schaefer?
I also appreciate the Ohio, the Ohio High School Athletic Association has been very clear in their policies and procedures when it comes to transgender students and what is the protocol in which they go through in order to have an approval process. And to my understanding, at this point in time, we do not have any transgender students who have gone through this process, who are competing in women's sports. So I also feel like this is a bit of a problem. It's not a problem looking for a solution when there aren't any who this, who are currently participating. So I'm not concerned and I would prefer to have the Ohio High School Athletic Association as well as our state legislature to handle this instead of having us become the forefront of a political lawsuit regarding being on the cutting edge of restricting these rights.
And sometimes you have to be brave and make decisions that are for the best of the, of the students.
Thank you. I am good. I have spoken what I would like to say. I appreciate being recognized by the president and I am good at this point and turn the floor back to you.
Thank you. Dr. Lilly, do you have anything you'd like to say on this?
Uh, no, I did, I did actually find the Anthony Wayne policy. If, if you're interested in hearing what it says.
Sure.
Locker room facility usage. Locker room facilities are provided for students to change clothes for physical education classes or athletic purposes. Each locker room includes individual restroom stalls for additional privacy. Students are not required to change for physical education classes, but if they choose to do so, a student preferring to change in a separate individual use restroom may request permission from a building administrator. Transgender students in our school community. There are transgender students who attend Anthony Wayne Local Schools. Just as with any student, building administrators work to identify potential concerns, set expectations and keep the lines of communication open. And this is highlighted, so it must have been new to their policy. Each student's needs are determined on a case by case basis, yet nearly all choose to use the restroom of their biological sex or an individual use restroom. However, transgender students do have the right to use the restroom based upon their sexual identity. Remember, these restrooms have private stalls for students to use. Transgender students, public schools and the law. Transgender students do have the right to use school facilities in accordance with their sexual identity based on case law that has jurisdiction in Ohio. Anthony Wayne Local Schools is prohibited from denying a transgender student access to a restroom consistent with their gender identity. It would constitute sex discrimination based on Title Nine or the Equal Protection Clause. Additionally, board policy prohibits discriminatory harassment based on sex, including gender identity. While there have been differently decided cases in other legal jurisdictions, they do not have authority over Ohio. The district will continue to consult with its attorneys to stay up to date with any related court cases and federal and state laws associated with the use of school facilities by transgender students in Ohio public schools. And it goes on with other things. I believe that is the.
That is not the policy that I.
I believe that's the.
That's a big policy.
Actually, I'm sorry. You're right. It's the letter that they sent to the community. Right here.
Yeah.
Can you invite the actual policy?
The policy that I have, it passed four to one. It says, new procedure is as follows. Anthony Wayne Local Schools provides restrooms and locker rooms for students, staff and visitors. These facilities are marked as men's, men slash boys, women slash girls, or all gender private restroom, single restrooms and locker rooms. All persons will use a restroom that is aligned with their biological sex, aligned, assigned at birth or a single use restroom locker room. Individual needs for other accommodations may be, must be addressed to building administration. All persons are expected to respect each other's privacy and dignity when using the restrooms and locker rooms. Inappropriate behavior or violation of school policy and procedures will result in disciplinary action. Anthony Wayne Local Schools is committed to providing environment free discrimination, harassment, intimidation or bullying for all persons.
And what's, what's the date on yours?
You know, I have to go back and look. This is just a screenshot that I took.
And the letter, the letter that I read, I apologize. I pulled up policy and then somehow I flipped it up. It's, it was April twenty twenty three.
This was, I believe, the past month or so.
Okay.
Again, though, that doesn't address individual policy, individual cases.
I don't pass four to one. And they can use their single use bathroom.
Yes, it does. And it said in that policy, it says other individual cases may.
But they are, but they are supposed to use their assigned at birth biological sex assigned at birth or a single use bathroom. And then other cases that may arise besides that you can use. And then I would also like to kind of add on to this. Sorry, let me get my papers. The school safety, eighty four hundred, it says the Board of Education is committed to maintaining a safe environment in all districts and schools. Well, right now, we're not doing that. There are children who do not feel safe. And then also eighty, or fifty five seventeen oh one, the Board of Education is committed to providing a safe, positive, productive and nurturing educational environment for all students. However, we're not doing that when we're not protecting the majority, or the girls from boys entering the, their bathrooms. There's, and I know you saw, you referenced those videos that I posted a while ago where there was a woman, where there were parents concerned. I mean, that does happen here in Lakota. So I mean, the, the small minority of, of students that are afraid to go to the bathroom or that want to use the bathroom, they can use the single use bathroom. They can use the, the teacher's bathroom. But we don't, we don't know to what extent, and I will guarantee you, there's more students who are concerned with having to share a bathroom. And it's not a, it's not because we hate the other person that wants to use the bathroom.
What is the concern then?
It's because.
They're stalls.
It's a boy. It's a boy.
They're stalls.
It's a boy.
Have you never?
A boy. And did you know that America, besides Europe, has the cracks in the, in the stalls? Where if you go to Europe, they don't have cracks themselves. You can see through our stalls and we've had an issue that you know where someone was peeking for the cracks of the stalls and made someone feel uncomfortable. So that happens.
Bathrooms in Europe are, are unisex bathrooms, so.
Well, this is children we're talking about, not adults.
I'm still talking, I'm, I'm still.
Mrs. Bodie, when you said that does happen in Lakota, what did you mean specifically?
I mean, I mean, there's children that are afraid to go to the bathroom or afraid to speak up because they know that there's a student in there that is biologically a male. And I'm going to say that there are more students that are, are, they're not fearful of that person. They're not, it's not a hateful thing. It's just, it's a boy and it makes them uncomfortable. My daughter is seven years old. And if she knows that a boy is going, she would be afraid to go to the bathroom because that's a boy in their mind. That's a boy.
Okay, so.
And it doesn't make them comfortable. But I understand trying to make the, you know, for the minority, make them comfortable. That's why we have the other option to use another bathroom. I mean, I obviously, I think we could probably go on forever on this.
We could. You're right.
And you and I are never going to see eye to eye on this, unfortunately.
That's true. That's true. That's true. That's why.
And same with Kelly. I mean, honestly, I, Jo-, sorry, Joy.
That's Julie.
I mean, it's unfortunate that we have to have this conversation. It's unfortunate that you guys feel the way that you do.
It's ten till and you haven't weighed in, so.
Yeah, let me start with more policy to come back to. I, I'm going to keep mine, hard to keep it brief actually, but I'll do my best. I am not interested in shutting down this conversation. I think it's a continuing conversation. So let me say from the start that these are my questions around what you proposed specifically and then some other issues. I believe Mrs. Castor was the one who said, when we're talking about this specific policy and measuring by DNA, how do we do that? How is that enforceable on a day to day basis? We look at policy, we need to look at things that we can actually make happen. And so the measurement here is, is an issue for me. To be measuring by DNA, that would be an issue.
Well, that's a certificate.
I'm going to finish speaking.
I'm just telling you, I would be adverse to the.
You have a lot of airtime. This is mine. So the enforceability part is, is an issue for me. And the birth certificate, as we know in the state of Ohio, the gender can be changed on the birth certificate. And again, I go back to, are we having kids walk in and they've got a little card with the birth certificate on to see which bathroom they should be going into?
You're being ridiculous.
Enforceability.
You can't.
Enforceability is an issue that you need to consider in any policy piece. Does it become the code, it, does it become part of our code of conduct? What's the discipline for noncompliance with the policy? I have those kind of questions when I think about this particular policy. I, I'd also be very interested. I don't think that I heard you reference it. Any OD regulations, standards or positions on this particular issue? And do we know what other states are doing? And then I look at the consideration of what our attorneys have told us. Well, we've had several law firms tell us. And I, I asked for just some brief information and I got a full page, a summary of where we're at and the case law that's behind this. And it's kind of an evolution of transgender law. Nineteen seventy two is when Title Nine was, has since then has been amended several times in regulations implementing Title Nine case law around the country. It's really muddied the water a lot, whether or not Title Nine protects issues related to students' sexual orientation and gender identities. And I think you were talking about some of the same things that I've got here, so I won't run through all of those. Case law on this particular issue is constantly evolving. And the issue with the Bethel, Bethel School District, which is now, the school district's policy was supported. And we had the parents that were coming in against the policy were not supported. I'm absolutely sure that would be appealed. And at this point, what our attorneys are telling us is they expect this to be a seven figure lawsuit for whatever district decides to take this on. And I understand your point about there are some things that are willing to die on a hill. And you said, I'm willing to take those lawsuits. But I have to stop and consider, that's not a check I'm writing. That's on the taxpayer's dime.
And I think we didn't write that.
Still mine, still mine. It's on the taxpayer dime in an fiscally responsible way. Regardless of where you fall on the issue, is this something that legally we can do anything about? That's my concern, a concern. There's also a House Bill, one eighty three, which I think was introduced this year. Which is in process. And again, that may make a big difference in where this goes as well. And I don't have a status update on one eighty three, but.
I do.
Do you?
I bring it all just to see.
Do you want me to explain it?
It was, it was introduced on May twenty third. And then on June seventh, it was referred to Committee House of Higher Education and nothing's been done since. It's the single sex bathrooms regarding single sex bathrooms access in primary, secondary schools and institutions of higher education.
Commander President?
So it hasn't, it hasn't moved forward yet from that, is what you're saying, Mr. Boglum?
Yeah, there's been no activity according to when you go onto the House Bill website. Yeah, there's been no activity, according to when you go onto the, uh, House Bill website.
I do want to say, I agree with Mrs. Bodie's concerns, and I've heard them as well, in terms of privacy, in terms of discipline issues that happen in the bathroom. And that would be rather, it's a boy looking in on a girl, a girl looking at another girl, anybody. There are privacy issues that need to be enforced in our discipline dealing with bathroom issues. And so if those things are happening, I very much hope that you're referring into building administrators and asking parents to make sure that gets passed on because it's a supervision issue that should not be happening.
Of course. I believe you're aware.
And I agree a hundred percent with you on that.
Of that situation that happened.
I I will say, you might want to double-check and just ask the chairman if they did refer it to the administration so that it could be dealt with. I am interested, and I wish that we had seen it earlier than being able to just hear the Anthony Wayne policy. I think I would like to look at that a little closer and understand that policy a little bit better and the reasoning behind it. Um, again, a seven-figure lawsuit on this, using taxpayer dollars, is huge to me.
I don't believe that fact, actually. I honestly don't have seen that. I haven't heard that. And so I'm not really sure if that's a hundred percent valid. And then number two, you're up for reelection, so unfortunately, you're not brave enough to make a stance on this. And that's.
Again, personal attacks.
Well, that's the way it seems, and many will see it that way. So you're, unfortunately, many board members are not afraid to take a stand for the safety of our students.
And many board members believe that they should consider taxpayer resources and decisions.
And it shows in your answer, and you're up for reelection, so you know, it smells like it.
So I would like to ask, can we just go on to the five minutes?
I would like to ask, are you willing to look at the Anthony Wayne policy if we bring that back?
I'll look at it, but it will, I don't believe it will change my mind.
Let's have a discussion.
Yeah, bring it forward. To me, what I heard from Dr. Lolly's letter is, we'll find it, where they address it to the community is the one that maybe makes them upset.
Dr. Lolly would like to speak.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I was trying to write.
I'm sorry. I didn't.
I can't take it.
That's all right.
I just, is there a, on the, I have not been able to find a specific board policy in here, just this letter. Can you tell me what the policy number is so I can try? It it references, um, their anti-harassment 5517, but it's not in there, whether it's not in there yet or if, you know, if it hasn't been updated on there.
I don't think that's. You know, it was, it was said the motion passed four to one.
What was the date when that happened?
So maybe it's not, like I said, I don't have that data. I just took a screenshot.
Give a screenshot.
I do not. I just have a screenshot of what that was.
So so do you have the motion? I mean, do you have, do you have one of the motions on?
What?
Does it?
Yes, I can send that to you.
Okay, can you send that to me, and then I can track it down?
Well, I just, this is what was passed, and I can do more research. Like I said before, I will do the research and find that.
Yeah, and I can, I can help you do that. I mean, I can help you try to contact them too and see what we can find. They use Neola as well.
It says, Mr. Miller, yes. Mr. Brent, no. The motion passed four to one. The new procedure is as follows, and that's the information that I have.
Okay. And and you don't, the date was not on there?
It might have been, but I just took a screenshot of it, so I need to go back and.
Okay.
Where did you get the information to take the screenshot? Maybe I'll help.
I'm in a group with board members across Ohio.
This, this was April 5th, so if you can try to find the date, and then we can compare whether or not this is old or whether or not it's recent, the most recent.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And then I'll let you know if I find anything too.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have any further, so this to me is an ongoing discussion. I don't think the door was closed on it. Even Mrs. Casper has said she's willing to consider it.
No, I said I'm willing to listen to what I'm being raised.
She's not changing her mind.
Is that a consideration?
And you're not changing yours, though.
No, ma'am.
First, it's being still.
So we'll gather, you'll gather the information on that other piece and get it to the rest of the board, please. Any further discussion on that issue? All right, let's do a very quick look at 0155 that Mr. Zink has passed out to us. And the change to this is basically based on the fact that we've had some whole board committees more so than we've had in the past. Some of our committees are not whole board, and so this gives us a little bit of flexibility and leeway, and now if you take that, we shall consist of no more than two members. And we make it dependent on the board making a decision on those committees.
I personally would prefer to wait, like, again, I haven't had a chance to review this ahead of time. I like, I don't feel that there's a sense of urgency necessarily in this. Like, by the org meeting, I'd like to have it in place. But I feel like we could do that with still considering this the December meeting potentially. Or would we not? Would that be too late?
That would probably be later than we need to do it. It'll be up for a first read, and it'll also be up for a second read before we approve it, so.
What what's, what's the sense of urgency on this one?
To make sure we're compliant with our policy.
And where's the, what policy are you?
The one they just brought us this.
No, like, where did you get the information to ensure that we are compliant by this policy? What did you reference to get this policy? Did you go, was it N O R C? Was this developed by their attorneys?
Yes.
We asked.
Here it is, 3336.
We asked them to put something together so that we were compliant with their policies.
So what is the reason you're submitting this? Like.
Because right now, it says, it committees, is it committees shall consist of no more than two members.
Right.
And so like, we're all on safety, we're all on policy, so.
Right. This is just ensuring that we are following our own policies.
Again, I I haven't had a chance to review all this. Uh, to me, it would be committees shall consist of of two to five members determined by vote of the board. Could be, you know, I I don't.
I mean, is that amendment?
So I, that to me would make sense.
At least two.
Yeah, two to five is what she said. Two to five, yeah.
We know that it's said two to five.
So that.
I don't understand another way to word that would be at least two.
I think that would serve at least my girl, we.
Yeah. Just to give us that flexibility. Again, I haven't really had a chance to read and review the rest of it, but that to me would seem like that would probably fulfill our need.
Well, if we took that blue
Yeah, just.
and added that in place of committees shall consist of no more than two members, that would bring us into compliance.
Right.
So Mrs. Schaefer has suggested committees shall consist of two to five members as determined by the board.
And why are you wanting to, uh, this is membership on committees created by the president will be determined by appointment of the president. So if you create a committee and only you appoint, um, the committee members?
That would be based on, for instance, an ad hoc committee, based on Robert's rules, an ad hoc committee is generally appointed by the president. It would be for a special purpose. Some project comes up, um, Kelly, would you please serve on this committee and it's for this purpose only? That's normally how that would work. That doesn't happen very often with us. In fact, I don't know if I can remember when that we found that way. But that covers Robert's rules. I think that's why they put it in there.
So, yeah, at this point, I would be comfortable just changing that. Is, so I assume the peach color, orange color is currently in the policy?
Yes.
So, yeah, I would be comfortable with just changing committees shall consist of two to five members. Because right now.
We'll check, we'll check with legal?
Yeah.
In terms of whether or not that was critical and have inclusion in the rest of the board.
Okay.
So would you want to keep that part in there about majority vote?
I think just as determined by the board.
Yeah, I just, the blue part, I mean, maybe in the future, but again, until I have a chance to review it, I'm comfortable saying that's my lead vote.
As determined, okay. Committees shall consist of two to five members of the board.
As determined by the board.
Majority would be four to one versus, what, three to two?
Majority is three to two.
I mean, majority would be three to two.
Well, I mean, there's two different options. There's majority and.
Super majority four to one.
Super majority is four to one.
The super majority.
Oh, that super majority is four to one, and the majority is three to two. Okay, thank you for clarifying. I knew there was.
All right. Anything else on 0155? Nothing. Any further discussion? Mr. Fulgham, anything else you need to run past us?
No, I just want to make sure I got this right. Committees shall consist of two to five members of the board as determined by the board.
Two to five members as determined by the board.
Asked.
Right.
Yeah, either way, either way works.
Gotcha. No, I like yours better. Instead of the same word twice, six words.
Redundancy, proper redundancy. All right, hearing nothing further, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second, I will take Mrs. Casper. Mrs. Schaefer is the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Lolly.
Yes.
Ms. Mayne.
Yes.
Mr. Fulgham.
Yes.
Mr. Zink.
So, we're going to.
I take a five-minute break on the ladies again for facilities.
So he's not on policy? Is he having like a phone call where he's not here actually, but then he's out of this?
He didn't have a, said he had a business call.
Building, so like, I don't understand it. It seems suspicious to me.
Well, you have a policy version.
Yep.